Township of Precipiny, Troy Hills. Regular Township Council meeting. This is our agenda meeting for July 25th, 2023.
It's our regular meeting.
It says it's a council agenda meeting. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 21st, 2022, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 28th, 2023. Please note, council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays and are also available for viewing at www.precipiny.net. Would you please join us in a flag salute? Councilman DePiero, please. I'll keep up all the wrong words.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the law of which stands the nation, the republic, and the liberty of the just one.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barbario, Business Administrator Jamie Cryon, Township Attorney Wade Baldwin, and Municipal Clerk Collette Madden. Council President, we have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, August 8th, 2023 at 7 o'clock is our agenda meeting. August 22nd, 2023 at 7:00 PM is our regular meeting.
Approval of minutes, Agenda Meeting 61323, Regular Meeting 62723. Motion to approve the minutes above by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Presentation reports. Mayor Barbario.
Yeah, I have several things I'd like to discuss. First and foremost, the Mount Tabor Library, at least, I signed it yesterday, so that should be complete, and I'm waiting, I guess, waiting on the president of the Mount Tabor, the CMA, to sign it as well. Tonight, I brought the chief with me, but before we get to that, our BA is going to be introducing the chief. He's going to be speaking about other things with regards to that. Let's talk about our police department very quick. So, as you know, when I came back in 2022, we were down to 81 deployable police officers. And right now, our goal was to continue to add to those numbers. So last year, we added nine, and we saw in five just about a month ago. So we're trying to beef up our police department, get it back to where it was. That being said, we'll be talking about the police department in a few minutes. Baldwin Road, I got several complaints with regards to Baldwin Road. I don't know if you know, going across Baldwin Road over 46, there's a section over there on Baldwin Road that has been paved, paved over and paved over. What happened there was, about four years ago, there was a new water line that was put in. Well, that water line lifted the sewer line up, and when the sewer line was lifted up, it had to be repaired. So the sewer line was repaired, but meantime, as it was repaired, the road kept sinking, and so they had to continue to do repairs on it. So we think that, and we'll find out shortly, that the roadway is repaired, and eventually the township, once we get all our funding, our bonding done, will be paving it. I don't have a timeframe on that yet, but I'll be looking to get the timeframe with regards to that. Just a few other things here, let me see. Oh, I want to discuss real quick, and I wrote something up with regards, because I know a lot of residents are here, with regards to 20 and 30 Lanadex. Just, I want to let you know that this is not an approval tonight for a warehouse. This is an approval for the redevelopment plan, which the council recommended to the planning board. So I just want to read what I wrote, just to make it more clear of what's going on. As you know, we have way too many vacant and antiquated office buildings in Precipiny. These obsolete buildings are underutilized, and they cost our taxpayers money. Also, they create an unattractive nuisance. Bad things happen when buildings go vacant and properties are unsupervised. This is especially so when such blight of property is next to a school. In my campaign for mayor, I pledged to our residents that I would do all I could to work with property owners to repurpose these types of buildings. One such building is at 2030 Lanadex. This 60,000-square-foot office building has been vacant for three years and is in disrepair. There is no market for the property as office. We just got a report back from one of our business, from NACSE, the tax assessor. The office market, they don't expect it to recover until 2045. We've been working with the owner to repurpose this building. There are two viable uses for this site, modern warehouse or multifamily housing. Frankly, while I know that we have a significant affordable housing obligation going forward, multifamily housing is not preferred here. Warehousing is the best use to repurpose this property so we can clean up this blight and create a positive tax ratable. One of my goals is to increase the amount of taxes paid by commercial users and decrease the burden on our residents. The only way to do this is to get more commercial ratables. In fact, based on what this plan provides, the township can anticipate increasing revenues on this site by approximately $100,000 per year. We will also receive construction fees, sewer fees, and to help our taxpayers going forward. If we do nothing on the site, it will continue to decay, it will cost our taxpayers, and will eventually become multifamily housing. Such is not a good result for Precipiny. This is why the site is going through the redevelopment process. Based on a public hearing and recommendations of the planning board, the council has already declared this site to be an area in need of redevelopment. Tonight is a public hearing and a second reading on the redevelopment plan, which is the zoning to permit the warehouse use. Tonight is not the end of the process. The redevelopment must still go before the planning board for the site plan approval. The planning board will evaluate traffic, stormwater, internal circulation, architectural, and other issues that the planning board reviews as part of the site plan process. The applicant will need to make his proofs before the planning board and demonstrate compliance with our standards. The plan before the council simply provides for permitted use and bulk criteria, height, setbacks, parking, et cetera, that will govern the site plan. This plan was prepared by our township planner. The planning board determined the plan to be consistent with our town's master plan. Tonight, the council has an opportunity to take a significant step towards repurposing this property so that it can be productive property once again, paying more taxes, and being a place where jobs can be created. I also wanted to say that the redevelopment plan provides the planning board the power to impose conditions to mitigate impacts on neighboring properties. So I just wanted to bring that forward to the residents that are here tonight with regards to that. Tonight is not an approval of a warehouse. It still has to go through an application, it still has to go through a site plan, it still has to be approved by the planning board with conditions. So, thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Township Council, any reports?
Yes, Council President, I just have some questions for the administration, because lately, a problem that I've been having is one where the administration has been ignoring my attempts to get requests of information from my constituents. And on some matters, it's been over two weeks, so I'd like to know what is the plan to address the items that I've been asking for almost over two weeks by now?
All right, you go first, and I'll go second.
You, Councilman and Council President, if I may.
Yes, please.
Councilman, you requested some information to some department heads directly, which is not the best course of action. It should go through the mayor's office and his designate, which is me. And then when you do that, there's a couple of outstanding requests that you had out there. I sent you an email today that went over all of your concerns. I can go over it line by line if you'd like, or give you a summary, or you can take a look at the email and...
I mean, it's a 5:30, I didn't see any email to my response. So, frankly, there's been a pattern where I'll ask for things for weeks, following up on items with no responses, and then there's a response, I don't know, 30 minutes, an hour before this council meeting?
Well, Councilman, none of these requests were weeks. Most of them were days. A few of them were about subject matter that was already discussed, and some of them were about subject matter that is on the agenda for tonight, that you probably knew about, but just didn't, you know...
But I mean, one of the, I was told that... At least, Chief was not going to be here tonight, and now he is here tonight, so you can understand my frustration when I talk to my constituents about things that are happening, and there's a miscommunication. And what, all I want...
I like to respond, though, with regards to miscommunication.
All that I'm asking for is timely responses to issues that range from potholes, that raid roads, and then obviously, public safety, which has been a big priority of trying to understand what's being done right now.
Understood, but you know, what you talked, what you looked for with these requests that you're actually talking about, one was a tree that was the wrong address, so we found the address and got the address and then got the information. It's on the list and ready to be done. One was a sewer project that the road is settling and needed time to settle. One was about a change order that's on the agenda for tonight, and once that change order is passed, the process can continue. One was about GovPilot issues that you and I discussed a couple of times, and I thought we were on the same page with it. If there's a specific request, I can get it to you, I can get you all the information on a specific request. Now make it easier, and with the chief being here, the main reason the chief is here tonight is, Mayor asked him to come, because there's been so much misinformation about a few incidents that are ongoing. Some articles out there making it seem like we are Beirut, you know, or the worst section of Newark, when a chief, and I'm not going to put words in your mouth, I'm sure Chief, I trust Chief completely to answer any question and to make sure that the public is appropriately notified and appropriately, you know, feeling okay about our police and what's happening. But some of these articles are going kind of like really crazy, almost like we're Newark or something like that, when we have less incidents than a Florham Park, or a Livingston, or any other town around us that would be considered as nice as us.
Yeah, and I understand that. These responses are great, but they should come before council meeting, much more time before council meeting, specifically at the time of when I make these requests and they're not happening right now, so we don't have to have these conversations, because I'd much rather to get the answers, tell my constituents what's going on, than to have this public back and forth. That's the point, is I want there to be...
Okay, so let's follow the actual statute, which you don't do. You don't follow the statute of the mayor council former government. You've been told on several occasions to not contact the department heads directly, and you do such. Then I get an email from a department head who feels like they're being pressured with regards to your, you know, you calling them up and you, you know, pretty much badgering them. They're not going to, the process is you go through the administration, you go through the mayor or his designate. That's the state statute.
But what do I do if I don't get a response?
Well, because you didn't do that. You go right to the depart...
I have it multiple times.
I let you speak, now it's my turn to speak. You constantly do that, and these are our constituents too, they're not just your constituents, okay? Just like you called me up, and you said, oh, you looked at Facebook. I did, I haven't seen anything on Facebook. I haven't seen anything that had to do with a burglary or anything like that, and I'm trying to figure out why people are just calling you. The bottom line is that we will deal with, if you do it the proper way. Just contact the administration, because the department heads aren't going to answer to you. That's not how it works. Now, the past mayor, before me, he had a memo out that went to the council, which is NJSA 40, 69A, dash 31, that a council member, it does not go directly to the department head. Now, I know you did that on a Thursday night to an individual who was fairly upset because you just didn't understand what that person was saying, and I can't get into the logistics about it, because I don't know if it's going to be considered harassment or not. But the bottom line is, Justin, all you need to do, Councilman, is come through the administration. You didn't do that on four occasions, you went directly to the chief, you went directly to the TPW, you went directly, and they're not going to answer it, they're not going to. Not that they don't want to, but they want to follow the protocol, that's all.
I understand, but if I don't get calls back from you, Mayor, or from your designate, and I have pressing issues to try and help my constituents with, what do you want me to do?
Well, here's the, no, no, here's the bottom line. You don't do that first. You go to them first, and that's the process. That's the problem, I mean. You go right to the director right away, and they called me up right away, I said, well, I'll wait from the, I'll see, and you finally just send me the information on what you asked the chief, and some of the stuff that you asked the chief, he can't talk in the public. Things are still under investigation, he can't come out publicly and talk about it. There's certain things he can't talk about, there's certain things, and there's a reason it's being investigated, and all the other criteria. But we're going to get you the information. We're going to, what we're going to start doing, because I used to do it when I was a BA, there's going to be a monthly crime report. Every council member is going to get a monthly crime report, what's going on here in Precipiny, and all that kind of stuff. So that's an answer to one of your questions, but the other questions, like IA information, you made a comment with regards to internal affairs. Well, he can't talk about internal affairs. I can't talk about internal affairs. It's internal affairs for a reason. It's not supposed to be talked about, because if something's under investigation, you're putting that personnel, you're putting that person in jeopardy, so we're not going to discuss that in an open public meeting, okay? You'll get your information, you'll get how the police department runs, and how it does its community outreach, which we've been doing for I don't know how many years, and stuff like that. But I'm going to recommend to you, just call Jamie, go right to the BA, don't go to the department heads, because they're not going to respond. And it's for a reason, it's not because they don't like you or anything like that, it's because that's the way our form of government runs. We don't have six, five mayors up here, we have one mayor and five council members. And it's that way for a reason, and I think it's one of the best forms of government, because I was a BA in the different form of government, which was probably much more difficult to run a town, where you have five council members who can make decisions, and you don't have the one person that can make the decision when it comes to emergencies, floodings, you name it. So if you have an understanding and you can follow that statute, I think things will move smoother.
And that's all I want. I want a system where I can call the BA, and if my questions are answered, my concerns are addressed, there won't be any issues. But if I don't get any responses from you or your designate, and I need to get information, I'm not the type of person to sit on my hands. I get our form of government, and I totally understand that. You had mentioned before you don't know why people come to me. People come to me because they're disappointed with sometimes the abysmal response they get from Town Hall. And I don't want to get involved, I want Town Hall to be operating as efficiently and effectively as possible. So if we're on the same page...
Well, I'm going to respond to that comment. When you say dismal, that's personal, that's bull. I'm going to tell you first and foremost. This gentleman is a very good BA when I hired him, okay? He does a great job getting back to the residents, and these issues, no one's called us up on some of these issues that you were, you're bringing forward. No one comes with a list of all the police department, its functions, unless somebody's giving you that list to give to us. Because the bottom line is, a lot of that stuff is coming from, especially the IA stuff, how would you even know about that? It's internal affairs, it's not something you shouldn't even know about. So if somebody's telling you something that you shouldn't even know, that I don't know and I shouldn't know, and the chief shouldn't know on some stuff when it comes to internal affairs, but you seem to have known. But that's beside the point. The point is, we just made, and to sit there and consider, they're our constituents, there's five of me, myself, they're all our constituents, they're not just your constituents. That being said, you call my office, or you call Jamie, you will get the information you need.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the town council?
I have a couple of things I may. Just the status of the street dedication?
That's coming to signs, I have to, first I got to talk to Jimmy Walsh now to get order to signs. I thought it was Justin Leesa, it's not, it's Jimmy Walsh, which I do apologize.
Okay. And the other thing is the knock-in training that I recommended many months ago.
Well, Hank is working on it.
Yep.
Who's working on it?
Who's working on it?
Your source is working on that.
Okay. Can I put that on some kind of a status report so we know?
Sure.
The progress that's being made?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to make a comment. For most of us that have seen recently reported in the Precipiny Focus with the, we're talking about Lanadex, the other side, the Lanadex project right now, you know, a while back we approved a PLA. And that PLA guarantees that trained workers, prevailing wage, standards that are set by the state of New Jersey are followed. And at that Lanadex project, that worked, there was just a work stoppage, because the state came in, did an inspection, and there were workers there that are not being paid prevailing wage, workers are being paid cash, there are not, there's potential for some of these workers that are not fully trained, safety issues may not be being adhered to, a whole array of different things. And that is why the town, we protected ourselves with this PLA, because down the road, when there's a certificate of occupancy in these projects is issued, and 10 years from now, things start going wrong with these buildings, and there's problems there and issues, the town is going to be on the hook for that. And if it was a town project, and we didn't have the guaranteed certified trained workers, and these things went wrong, the town is going to be liable. So that project right now, I don't know exactly what the status is of it, if it's still, you know, it's stopped right now, but that wouldn't be the case if that, if that project was, fell under that PLA. That would not be the case. So I just wanted that out there. The town, we protected ourselves if that was a town project by having a PLA in place. Thank you.
Anyone else? Township Attorney, Mr. Baldwin?
No report.
Business Administrator, Mr. Cryon?
Thank you, Council President. Real quickly, the garbage collection, we're going to start it an hour earlier, over the next three days due to the heat. We want to make sure that our employees are safe. So if there's any inconvenience, if that causes any inconvenience, please call us and let us know, and we'll do our best to help rectify any individual situation, but please know that this is in the best interest of our employees. We do have the farmer's market this Friday, I know, Mayor, you were going to...
Yeah, we have Produce Pete's coming this Friday, I think around 5:00. If you know anything about Produce Pete, he's on a lot of those Food Network shows, so he's coming to our farmer's market. I got to tell you, the farmer's market, every week it gets better and better. You know, when we first bought the farmer's market back, we had the farmer's market over here, it really didn't do well, but this farmer's market has not just, you know, produce and stuff, it has popcorn, it has, it has actually honeybees, I'm allergic to bees, but I don't go near that anyway, but has a whole host of things that the residents can enjoy, and it really has, it really continues to grow. And on August 4th, we're going to have a summer concert during it, starts at 5:00, 5:00 o'clock, it goes from 5:00 to 7:00, but the residents actually truly love it. It's, and it will get bigger as time goes on. We just had a, one of our summer concerts, which was at Liquid Church, which was British Mania, was a huge hit. It was, it was really good, it was actually great. I mean, I never got to see the Beatles, but they sure sounded just like the Beatles, and it was great. So we're looking to do something a little bit different. We never did this before, and I got the idea right after doing a winter concert. We've had summer concerts, but we never had a winter concert, and we're working on a sponsor for our winter concert, and we're going to bring the British Mania back for our winter concert. We're looking to do it in one of the high schools or at Liquid Church again. I'm hoping to be able to do it in a high school, because I like, I would like to do it in Precipiny Hills or Precipiny High, and then we get a really good sound system. But the residents really truly enjoyed it. You know, I got some phone calls on it, if we can do it again, it doesn't just have to be British Mania, it can be another band as well. But that's giving back to the community, and we are working on sponsors for more concerts in the future.
Just one or two other quick items. The, we are, so Mayor talked about Produce Pete and the concerts, and that, and the Produce Pete is at 3:00. And we just gave him the finger right now to tell me what it was. So as far as requests or issues and resolving them regarding town employees, you have a group here who care overall, and it's not just because I'm here or anybody up here is here. These employees care and have cared for a long time. They want to do great, and they want to serve you well. Sometimes they aren't able to do it as quickly as you may like, or as quickly as they would like. But please know that it's, if you're unsatisfied with the work, please try not to take it out on the worker. They are doing their best. We have Chief Pantina here, there's been some incidents that have been talked about, or alluded to up here, and have been talked about, and you've seen some articles in the paper. There's no better person to talk about how we are handling these situations than the person who's leading our police department. Chief is wanted to be here and is here to just talk about a couple of things.
Do I have to state my name?
Please.
Richard Pantina, Chief of Police, Precipiny. I apologize in advance, I have a little bit of a cough, so if I talk too much, that might happen. I want to thank you, Council President, Mayor, Barbario, Business Administrator, for allowing me to speak tonight. You know, I've been reading a lot about some crimes that have happened in the paper, and Councilman, I got your questions, there were some issues there with some of the crimes also. I just want you to be confident that the police department is doing everything they could do to prevent or to be more aware of these crimes that are happening. We're investigating all of them. Some of the questions you asked, like the DA said, I can't, I can't get into what we're doing, but we have made some changes in the police department recently to allocate manpower where we think we need it more. We changed our schedule to put men in different times where the crimes are higher. So I hope when you speak to your constituents, that you let them know that they should have confidence in the police department, because we have great men and women that work there. They're very highly trained. They really do care, like you said about workers, they really do care about this township and the people that live here. I don't have a whole lot to say on what's been happening. Our numbers are lower, actually, than they were last year. One is too many, burglaries, car thefts. We actually just had some car thefts the other night, and we already have a lead on who we think it is, so we're very close to solving that, those six that happened the other night. There were other car thefts that happened this year, I think we're up to about 19 for the year, but as I was telling the mayor before, probably eight or nine of them are incidents where a girlfriend took the car from somebody, somebody didn't return the car to a leasing company, you know, so there were stuff like that. They weren't just, you know, random, somebody parking in their driveway and stealing the car. We have had incidents where burglaries are part of the problem, right? So they'll go into a house, burglarize a house, take the key and take the car, and that's most of the time their main purpose, is to get an expensive car that's in the driveway. So I, you know, I've watched people give talks about how to prevent the car stuff. I never want to make it sound like I'm telling the public what to do, or like belittling them in any way, but we really need your help in this area, we need you to lock your doors, lock your cars, keep your key fobs where they can't be just taken, that would help us greatly. But we are working very hard at it. I want to thank the mayor again, you know, staffing this department the way it needs to be as a top... it needs to be is a top priority. Um, I know we have been replacing people as they leave, and I'm telling you in advance, next year we're gonna push for more people, you know, to actually build the number up. But, um, you have a, really have a great asset in this Police Department. Uh, and that's not because I'm leading it. Um, these men and women are top class, and like I said, they're, they're highly trained. Um, we don't miss a trick. Uh, I saw Dennis Lutz here in the back, uh, who's got a wealth of knowledge on, you know, school security and stuff like that. We've had discussions. I'm willing to take advice from anybody. Councilman Karifi, I know you have a long history of police work, you know, I'm there to listen. Um, I don't shut anybody out if they have, you know, opinions or advice on how we should do it. I'm more than willing to listen, so, um, I don't think I have anything else unless somebody has a question.
Only thing is, I'm gonna say is, uh, the chief has done a great job. With regards to that, um, this is more for the council. I'll be meeting with the superintendent of schools tomorrow with regards to school, um, active shooters and stuff like that. I spoke to Sheriff Gannon with regards to any help or any, you know, that they could do with the county, and they have a gentleman up there that his expertise is in, you know, active shooting, and so we're gonna, we're gonna meet with him as well, and then have the chief meet with him. And, um, so, as well, you know, we're getting ahead of the game, I, you know, the new superintendent of schools, I'm looking forward to working with him.
Yeah, and just talking about the schools, we have training coming up from the FBI, which I spoke to Dennis about also, um, in September, late September, October. And, um, we're now in the process, while the school's out, we're having every officer take turns, we're taking them to the different schools to show them the layout. Um, old sergeants in their cars have swipe cards, so they have access to the schools. Um, so we're, we're moving in that direction to, to protect the schools as we try to protect everybody in the community. But, you know, we're, we're taking steps to, you know, um, have a better understanding of how things work for the Board of Ed and how we want to handle an incident that might come in, so. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, can I, may I ask some questions?
Sure.
Okay, well, first and foremost, thank you for coming tonight and being with us. Um, and the, the first responsibility that we have is to keep everybody safe, and on that, all of us agree to provide you with whatever support. But along the way, um, and I do not have a law enforcement background, there comes questions that I get that I can't answer, which is why I have emailed the administration and you, um, you know, general open-ended questions, and if there's certain items you can't discuss, I, I totally understand, but I really would like a response to those questions that I sent you, so, you know, we can find out, you know, how we can better support you and provide you with the, the resources that you need to stop the, uh, the, the recent spate of car thefts and burglaries that, you know, we've been seeing.
Right. Well, and I did state you will get those questions answered, and, um, you want to stop them, you got to put police officers at every commercial property and every household. That's gonna be 100% stop it. Uh, uh, we, we, you really want to man the police department, you have to put maybe 300 police officers on there. What, what we have, we have to, we have to work with what we have. We are, as you know, we have budgetary constraints, but at the same time, we have the proper training, we, we're gonna get it back up to 106 police officers over time, and that's gonna have to be like the chief said. We're only replacing retirees right now. Next year, we have to replace retirees and actually add maybe five to six more police officers to get it back to the numbers we need to get it to. Um, and so, because we have, how many districts do we have? Five districts that you have to?
Five, five.
Okay, so, we have, to be able to man them, you have to have the manpower. Okay, so if you don't have the manpower, what happens? Your overtime goes up. So, you have to keep that in mind for next year's budget. If we're gonna make this town safer, we're gonna have to pay for it. It's that simple.
I can just say a few more things. Um, so your questions I answered, right? The, the mayor will send those to you, and I think the rest of the council also.
Yep.
Um, before the mayor spoke about internal affairs, so obviously, uh, Councilman Karifi, you understand, there's certain things we can't discuss with, with, uh, internal affairs. But you can go to our website, uh, www dot harpolice dot com. You click on the icon for internal affairs, and you could see any major discipline that we have, uh, given out in the past year. So, it wouldn't be 23, it would be 22. Um, so, that, that, that you can see. Minor discipline, we do not give out.
And is there any thought to, you know, license plate reader technology?
That's a, that's another aspect, yeah. Well, we have two ALPRs, um, those are the automated license plate readers. Um, but we're looking through the budgetary process to get stationary ones, which would help greatly. County uses, the, the whole county's utilizing those, and they're very, very helpful.
Because what I would be most excited to learn about is what technologies are out there that are available to local municipalities that we might not be utilizing that can, you know, reduce the, the lift on the average officer, that can, you know, improve their productivity and reduce any, you know, manual need, um, for them to perform a certain task and can supplement their, their daily duties. So, if there's any technologies or grants that, you know, we can pursue, I would be really excited to learn about that.
Sure, and then we have a grant company.
Right, we have a grant company. Plus, we also have some of the items that we discussed in our capital budget.
Right.
That the council has to approve.
And officers, I'm sorry, one second. Believe me, the officers all want new toys, right? Anything that can help us do our job, they're gonna be the first ones to tell me, hey, can we get this, can we get that? But also, we have to work within the budgetary process.
Of course.
Because stuff's not cheap.
You, you made a comment about productivity, and I've stated this before at previous council meetings about what people need to do, you need to talk to your legislators, because there's a thing called bail reform that came out years ago. The police departments are, are locking these people up. They are still locking them up at the same rate or even a higher rate. The problem is, they get right out. They get right out. There's been incidences in towns where a person breaks into a house in one town, two hours later, that person's back out on the street because of bail reform, and they get caught breaking into another house in the neighboring town. Car thefts, because these people know they're not going to jail, they're getting out right away, so they, there's no penalty, there's no price to pay. So, that's why they just keep doing it and doing it and doing it. The productivity is there, believe me. I, I train thousands of police officers, and it's a, it's becoming, it's getting frustrating because you're, you're catching these people, you're locking them up, two hours later, they're back out again, two days later, they're stealing more cars, they're breaking into more houses. And that's the problem. That's the major problem. Our police are doing a great job. These other towns, they're all, they're all getting it, some are getting it a lot worse than we are. And I know, it, it is frustrating, I don't want it in this town, like the mayor said, at the rate we're going, we'd need a police officer on every corner, and we just can't afford that. But we need to be able to keep these people in jail when they start doing these things, and that's one of the major problems.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Um, that is disheartening, right? So, the guys and the, and the women, the men and women of the Police Department, they want to work, right? You know how it is when you first start, right? You, you have that, like.
And, and you feel, you feel a sense of accomplishment.
You don't want to miss a trick. You think you might miss something, right?
Yeah.
Everybody wants to come to work and do their job, but it is disheartening, and it's our job as administration to try and get them more motivated, to keep them in that mindset, like, listen, you're doing the good work, you're doing the right thing, but again, you're right, if somebody could call or write a legislator to get these things changed, that's big help.
And it, you, Marsh County has seven legislators now, and is there any effort being done from a statewide level to reverse the insidious effects of bail reform?
So, I'm a member of the Police Chiefs Association, they are constantly, they have a member that actually goes to all legislative meetings, uh, goes to all meetings. So, yes, they do pay attention to what's going on, the unions also, the PBA, the FOP, they're all involved in that, but, you know, no disrespect to politicians, you're not the easiest people.
You can disrespect us.
You're not the easiest people.
Sometimes we deserve it.
Along with. But, um, no, but just again, um, we don't have a crime problem in person. We have incidents that are happening, and we look at every one of them every day, like I was telling you before, we check the reports every day, we analyze, we analyze what we look at, how we're gonna move our manpower to different places to make it better, you know, and more safe for the people, so. Just, you could tell your constituents that this is a great place to live, and the Police Department, the Police Department's working as hard as they can.
And Chief, to you also, uh, one of the things that community policing is doing is, if someone wants some advice on how their, uh, house is set up from a safety standpoint, uh, you guys are helping with that.
Yeah, so we do, most of them, we do, are for businesses, we do do private residence. If anybody wants to call the Police Department, Officer, uh, Del Sandro is a, um, uh, crime prevention officer also, they'll come to your house, they'll do a whole survey of your house, tell you where there's some flaws and where he thinks you could, you know, fix, um, the security aspect of your, of your house, and, uh, he'll write you a little note, tell you what he thinks you should do. It's open to everybody. So, um, eventually down the line, when we get more people, we'd like to build up our community, uh, division or section. Um, but right now, we're, we're working with Remo, and really what I would love is to have all our officers trained in community policing.
Yeah.
Because there used to be an actual class that, right, that we used to go to community policing, crime prevention. I would love to have everybody, uh, trained in this, so we could utilize everybody. But we're done.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Township clerk Madden?
No report at this time, President, thank you.
Township officers, committees, reports?
I had a library, uh, meeting last night, and, um, just want to report that, uh, I know, I spoke to the mayor earlier, that that light is back out again, uh, across the street, and they said they're working on it, there's a circuit or something that was, uh, not, not working.
Kept tripping.
Uh, tripped, kept tripping, so, um, I, I told folks last night I would, uh, bring that up. And then a gentleman from the audience, I mean, we know that they're close to $3 million short to build a new building, and a gentleman from the audience actually made a recommendation that the library start a GoFundMe campaign. I don't know if that's allowed, but, um, if it is, I don't think it's a bad idea. Um, and they asked, of course, if the town could help, solicited it, but again, I don't know what the rules are with that.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know if we can do, we can do a GoFundMe account.
No, they, they would.
Yeah, but the library is also a public entity.
Yes, I don't know.
Somebody, I, I think, and I could be wrong, Wade, um, I could be wrong, I think you'd have to have like a 501(c)(3) or something like that, that would do a GoFundMe, because we have to have a rider, we'd have, we'd have to have a trust fund.
Yeah, the township, uh, there'd be some details to work out, but, uh, there would need to be another entity to collect the funds, but then the township.
Right, you, I thought you would have, that's a 501(c), you'd have to have an op, but we couldn't, we couldn't do it.
Thank you.
I did meet with the Precipity Environmental Advisory Committee, um, and they are currently in the process of drafting a tree ordinance, um, and they're working out the details that they'll be sending to us so we can review and, um, provide feedback on.
Thank you. Any other reports? Thank you. Engineering report, Councilman Karifi?
2021 road resurfacing curb and sidewalk program. The annual road resurfacing curb and sidewalk project is on hold pending negotiations with the contractor, no council action required. Rockaway River flood wall levy inspection, our consultant is working on preparing design details and a cost estimate for the maintenance and repair work to the flood wall and levy. Recent site inspections were made to aid the design of the repairs. Once the design and necessary permitting is complete, the project will be advertised for bid, no council action required. North Beverick Road streetscape project phase one, the bids for the first phase of the North Beverick Road streetscape were opened May 3rd, 2023, and the total bid prices were significantly higher than budgeted. We were granted an extension to award the project, and we will rebid the project at a more appropriate time, no council action required. 2023 road resurfacing curb and sidewalk program, the annual road resurfacing curb sidewalk project is in construction. Work is anticipated to continue into the middle of August, no council action required. Mount Tabor street improvements phase seven, construction of the Mount Tabor street improvements phase seven project has begun, we anticipate work continuing through September, no council action required. Drummond Drive stream cleaning, the NJDEP permits have been issued for this project, our consultant is finishing the design, and we intend to build, bid the project later this year, no council action required. Puttingstone Heights Roads Improvement Project Phase Two, the second phase of Puttingstone Heights Road Improvement Project is in design, we anticipated bidding this project later this year, no council action required. Jefferson Road Improvements, we received a $760,000 NJDOT grant for improvements to Jefferson Road, from Precipity Road to Smith Road, the improvements include the resurfacing of roadway, minor inspection upgrades, significant drainage improvements, particularly near the east Halsey Road intersection. Permit applications, plans are being prepared, the project will be bid once NJDEP permits have been issued, no council action required. Lake Interview Area Street Improvements, the first phase of the Lake Interview Area Street Improvements Project is in design, we anticipate bidding this project later this year, no council action required. Silverway Culvert Improvements, we are working with our design professionals on the preparation of plans and the NJDEP permit application. We anticipate bidding this project in early 2024, no council action required. Major soil moving permit, 52 Navajo Avenue, block 525, block 21, the planning board has recommended approval of a major soil moving permit in conjunction with a proposed single-family home located at 52 Navajo Avenue. This office has reviewed the application and recommends the Township Council approve the permit. We recommend the Township Council approve the soil moving permit by resolution. Roadway design projects, the following projects are in design or proposals have been requested. Troy Brook Stream Cleaning, Silverway Sidewalk Improvements, River and Stream Desnagging Plans and Permits, Enten Road Traffic Study, no council action required.
And there are no correspondence? Bids taken? Mr. Justice?
Yep. Uh, 7/28/2023, retrofitting Musco lighting system at the Smithfield Park Soccer Field for Precipity Parks Department, B to be taken. August 3rd, 2023, one new 2023 valve maintenance trailer for the Water Department, C quotation slash proposal slash qualifications, there are none.
Thank you. Public session?
Make a motion?
I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public session. Motion to open the public session?
Make a motion?
Second, motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Negria?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public, you can speak on any matter, you have five minutes to speak.
Hello, uh, my name is, uh, Raymond Gallup. I'm, I'm here about the, um, Board of Trustees meeting last night about the Lake Hiawatha Library. I was rather disappointed that they all seemed to be talking about the, um, $9 million new building, because I think there's things that they could fix there, that I don't think the building is falling apart, it's not crumbling, I don't see any foundation crumbling there. And they have lights out inside, they have lights out, as you mentioned, outside, um, there's paint peeling on the building, stuff like that. I think it could be renovated at a, uh, inexpensive price. I even heard one woman there, I thought I heard one woman there say, $3 million is from the state is free money. I don't see tax money being free money. So, that, that got me a little bit annoyed as a taxpayer. Uh, I think, as, uh, Councilman Neglia said, a GoFundMe page would help out, and it wouldn't involve taxes and spending. Also, I think, Mayor, if you could go to some businesses and ask them, like, uh, Wyndham Hotels and Resorts in Precipity, or Home Depot, and see if you can get their help with the library, I think it would be something creative and thinking out of the box. I think it would, instead of always tax and spend, tax and spend, tax and spend. So, I just wanted to get this to you. Thank you, sir.
With, um, with regards to what you just said, we have met with some, um, future developers in regards to contributing, like you just said, uh, possibly helping out with the library, um, and stuff like that, and, and you're right, it's not free money, because although we got a grant for $3 million, the township had to match it. So, we had to match it with another $3 million, so it's actually $6 million. Um, and you're right, it comes from taxpayers, when you look at grants, all that's coming from the entire state, but the township had to match. to match $3 million of it. And we did have a meeting this week with regards to the Lake Hiawatha Library, and they're going to have to revisit pretty much on how we're going to move forward with it, because we don't have the funds. I mean, I don't, I don't see how we could put another $3 million up. That would be $6 million from the town and only $3 million from the, the grant. So, and I just speak to Councilman Neglia with regards to it. You know, and you said the lights were out, so we sent our maintenance, is going to go there and fix all that kind of stuff. But it's a big nut, and I don't, I personally don't think the town can handle it. But we are having meetings with them. They, they have a foundation, correct? They have to activate that foundation, because once you activate the foundation, then that's where these vendors and these commercial property owners can contribute to the, to their fund. And you're absolutely correct on that, Mr. Gallup.
One of the things they did say at the library meeting last night was that they were looking to hire a firm to do a proposal on repervishing the existing building. That would cost them $31,000 for that firm to give them that refurbishment quote and plan.
Julia Peterson, 25 old Parsippany Road. This is just a confusion that I have, okay? I wrote a statement, and I have something to give you, and I'm just going to give it to Gil, and he can pass it up. I'm just confused, because property owners got noticed, okay? We got a notice about this meeting. But this was going to be a hearing about the plan, Plan A, produced for the redevelopment of Lanex West, okay? And yesterday I attended the planning board meeting about that, in which they were trying to decide if it was congruent with the master plan. Anyhow, the ordinance that you're going to vote on tonight mentions specifically development of warehouses. And it seems to imply that it's, the site is truck dependent, well, that this particular site is an ideal place because it's accessible to Route 80 and 287. Lanex West is off of Parsippany Road, it's opposite the big Parque development. Plan A, which is what you're adopting tonight with this ordinance, this is Plan A, 90 pages long. And on page 36, in the development specifications that are being given out for this parcel, it says permitted uses and structures, fulfillment areas, fulfillment centers, and warehouses. That's what it says. Okay, now, I was at that meeting, there was a great deal of discussion about how many tractor trailers could fit on that site, where would the loading bays be, all that. So I'm just a little confused about what your vote is actually meaning. And I'm also a little confused about who actually drafts the ordinances. Who drafts the ordinances? Because I remember when this first came up in January, and someone came up in a meeting at the end, and not in a public portion or anything, and said, "This property needs to be a warehouse." That was January 25. I was not at that meeting, I've reviewed the tapes. So the, the trajectory of this plan seems to be to develop a warehouse. Now, other than the fact it's right next to my house, and right next to the Partry Funeral Home, which are both residences, you know, I understand that this might not be the appropriate venue for this conversation, but when you enact this plan tonight with this vote, it seems to me there's not a lot of going back from a warehouse. I understand the need for development in Parsippany, economics are very important. I also feel like the town has it in for us that live next to this site. And I have read the Highland, I've read the, the master plan, which says nothing about whether what's in sight. And I've also read the Highlands restrictions. The Highlands restrictions on this site require a thousand-foot buffer from a school. Eastlake School is 100 feet from this project, 100 feet. Those kids are just going to be, I mean, we all know what the garbage truck sounds like. This is going to be beep, 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 24 hours a day, for those of us that are close. And those of us that live near Parque, we're already living with that every day, because everybody that goes in there does the same thing. So as council members, I just need to know, I do know, I respect the job you do, I know a lot of you, but you need to understand that the needs of people who live here may be different than the needs of building a warehouse to have more radibles, especially on a less than 10-acre site. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Richards. I'm going to piggyback, is that on? My name is Stacy Richards. I've lived in Parsippany since 1985. I'm going to piggyback off some of the topics that the chief spoke about tonight. Like I said, I've lived here since 1985. I've rented two houses, I've lived in two, I've owned two houses. On June 5, I've lived in my house for 17 years. On June 18, my catalytic converter was sold. On June 18, my whole world changed. I didn't really think it was a big deal. I couldn't get back to sleep. And then it was the only thing that my husband and I talked about for five days. Then I went on vacation, and I came back from vacation, and a couple other things happened. First off, let me say this, the police response was unbelievable that night. My neighbors were unbelievable that night. My neighbor called the police, the police missed these dirtbags by one minute. The response was unbelievable. The young lady was professional, she was amazing. I have, I have no complaint about the police department, my complaint or concern is actually about the staffing and bail reform. So there have been some other incidents, but I don't feel safe anymore. And I know that you guys are doing everything that you can, but when it happens to you, it's completely different. I don't feel like in September I can open my windows and slip my windows open anymore. I can't leave my house with my windows open, because I don't know who's going to come into my house. I don't have a garage. My car is parked, it was backed into the driveway, they jacked it up, they cut my catalytic converter. I back it in for safety. Now I pull in forward so they can't get to my catalytic converter again. But I do appreciate everything that you do. I know there may be somebody else here, this must be Karen. So she's going to start a neighborhood watch, my husband and I are going to join. I know Officer Del Sandro is going to be helping us with that, which I completely appreciate. And I do appreciate everything you do, but I want you to know that right now I don't feel safe in this town. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Lynn.
Speaking for the.
I live in the town of Orangeville. Again, I don't know who's doing this thing on, but just letting you know, I'm not going to, I don't think I need this. I just want to, Officer, I was under, wonderful. You guys do a great job. Chris Mills, I just wanted to, obviously, the laws do not apply to this. Ah, thanks. Okay, so the rules don't apply to them.
Can I bring a closer to you now?
Sorry, I'm loud, I don't really think I need this. But I've been in the town, what, 24 years? I do not feel safe. I don't open my windows, because I don't know who's going to come through them. I have cancer, I don't really need to be up all night, but I'll do it. Because for the safety of my neighbors and myself, I'm watching my cameras and I'm not sleeping anywhere. So I figured I'll do a neighborhood watch. I don't, I'm not going out with a Louisville Slugger, I don't believe in guns, sorry, those that do. I don't want to stoop to their level, but I need to protect myself, my family, my cars, my house. This is ridiculous, and it's not you. But we're adding more people by these large developments that we're going to be putting in, and adding just a few more police officers isn't going to cut. So we need to do something. It's either move, be a victim, or stand up for ourselves. And we need to do that. And I, for one, can't do this alone, I need help. So I'm asking people here, come together as a community and help them. Because the criminals are smarter, and they're going to, they're just going to one-up you every time. They're slick, and they're born this way, they're raised this way, and it's disgusting. But I don't want them on my town. I don't want them taking our things, taking our homes away, our safety away, it's disgusting. So I'm just letting you know, my mom, if I can't do what those kids did, they wouldn't be able to sit down for a month. So I'm just letting you know, I feel bad for you, you're doing a great job. No offense to the mayor's office or anything, but I did contact you on several other things, I never heard back. So it's nothing personal, but we also have an issue with people being in the park that shouldn't be there when they have kids there. There's been policies in police to revoke the bathrooms from there, but it's still not safe to have homeless people sitting in the park when there's children there. They have electronics, I don't know if they're watching children in the bathroom, what they're doing, but they don't belong there. You have a car, you have electronics better than I do, move. Get out of the, don't stay there all day and watch these kids, it's unnerving. What's going on in our town, I know they don't want anywhere to go. But you got a car, you bought your Starbucks, you have your phones, get out of the park.
What park is it?
Oh, this is while they play games. Go there, watch how many homeless people sit there in their cars stalking the kids. And, oh, while they play games.
Ms., would you please, Ms., you have to speak to us.
And I wrote you guys about this, I also called the police, it's kind of weird. As a mom, it's unnerving. So I don't mean to be pointing fingers, and I know you can't control everything, but the parents of kids are unnerved and on the edge of what's going on with crime, adding this element is worse. So that's why if I could alleviate some things, which is if we come together to watch our homes, and our possessions, and our families, maybe we could allocate more time for these things, too. It's just sad. But I love it here, and I don't want to leave, but this is going to force you to know. Where to go, I don't know. You know, the governor's not going to let me leave the state unless I pay to move, so I don't know what's going on, but you know, I've got four more years in the school system, so I'm stuck here, I'm going to make it. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to take this time to thank Councilman Musella.
Sir, please state your name. Your name?
Richard Savage, 51 Elville Road. Okay, this one sound better? Okay. I'd like to take this time to thank Councilman Musella and the Parsippany Street Department, who reached, we recently reached out to Justin in our efforts to have some potholes taken care of on our street. We did call the mayor's office over a year ago, and nothing was ever done. We were just told that it would be looked into, and lo and behold, my wife was actually, well, my wife was a casualty of an accident, and we reached out to Justin, and Justin quickly took, took care of the, the issue for us. And for that, we thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, I'm James Anderson, this is my wife, Kim. We live at 56 East Heading Place in Mount Tabor. On the 4th of July, we were watching fireworks from our street. On the 5th of July, the wall that holds the street caved in, they'd been monitoring it for a couple of years. It's barely over 10 years old. And it collapsed down into neighboring properties on Morris Avenue, into three backyards. Fortunately, the family with the one-year-old and five-year-old kids, whose play equipment is directly below the wall collapse, were not playing in that equipment at that time, it was too hot. Tragedy narrowly averted. This has been an issue. The, that wall, like I said, replaced a wall that lasted for decades, decade, who knows, could be 100 years. This new wall, barely over 10 years old, that holds that street up, and it's been failing for two years. Engineering, Road Department, then analyzing it, stating that it was safe, they were waiting for something, you know, to happen. Well, it happened. Now, we have this giant big old tarp now hanging over the wall, and, and they built a berm, and sandbags, and closed the street down, so we're walking from one end of the street down to our house. It's dreadful. We've been here 20 years, okay? This is the second time this wall has collapsed in 20 years that we've been here. We demand the wall be rebuilt better, okay? For all of our safety, all right? I work for this town, all right? I work for the Sewer Department, I was a fireman in this town, and I'm sick of it, you know? And we need a water line, 400 feet, feed four houses a water line down that street. It has to happen. Build a wall so it won't collapse on people's homes, and put a water line down our street, okay? Tired of this nonsense.
And I'll, I'll be the closer. Yeah, we're, just to give you an idea of what the street is like, we're in Mount Tabor. It's a single-lane road, dead end, so we can no longer access our house with our vehicles. If our house caught on fire, the fire department would not be able to get to our house. If one of us, you know, God forbid, needed an ambulance, it would not be able to get to our house. They would have to push the stretcher up the street. We are parking our cars down at the end of the road, you know, at the end of the, you know, where they have the, the pylons. This is the second time this happened, as my husband mentioned. And, I mean, the timing might be good, it's a terrible thing to happen to have the wall collapse, but the timing might be good, because we do not have a water main running up our street. The other utilities go up the street, but the water line does not. And with the New Jersey law requiring homeowners to replace corrugated pipes with copper, that would make the most sense. We could have a new line run up the street, and then we could, you know, replace the galvanized pipe as required, so.
10 homes are affected by this, 10.
Yeah, so, I don't know if you remember us.
10 different homes.
We were here la, you know, you might remember us, we were here a while ago, a few months ago, maybe last summer, to talk about the, the water line issue. Because our water line runs, runs through our neighbor's property, and would require us to, you know, he would have to rip up his yard, we would have to knock down a couple of, you know, stone retaining walls in our, on our property. You know, you don't have water lines running through other people's property, so we're happy to replace it and hook it up at the curb stop outside of our residence. So we need the wall fixed, and since you're going to have to rip up the road anyway, let's, let's put the water line up the road. That's just, you know, the logical, reasonable thing to do. So, you know, thank you for listening to us, and, you know, you're all welcome to come check it out. So I thank the town for putting up the, you know, the, the tarps and the berm to control, like, the water, so the wall doesn't collapse further and there be more damage done, so.
Council President.
Thank you. Yes, please, I'd like.
Quickly. Mayor and, and this council are all committed to trying to find a solution for you, and we've been working on that. And Jawa Waka has put out to bid the possibility of, of running a line up the street, and it looks like it's feasible.
Great.
So that's where we're at right now.
Well, that's great news.
Yep. As far as the wall, who owns the wall? I'm sorry for not telling you.
It's the Town of Parsippany, it's, it's a public street, yeah.
And it's our retaining wall, it's not like a.
No, it doesn't abut anybody's property, it literally holds up East Heading Place, so.
But they did, I mean, Justin didn't go out there and say.
Yes.
Yeah, the engineers have been out, they've been very helpful answering questions, so.
Plus, what we're going to do with regards to the water line, the CMA president, I spoke to him at the last meeting, we're going to have a town hall with the residents of Mount Tabor with regards to lead copper rule, which, as you know, was imposed to us by the state. You have no copper up there, we got galvanized pipes, so they decided to add galvanized pipes. And the federal government said that we'd have to replace all lead pipes. So if we went by the federal.
Yeah, the engineers have been out, they've been very helpful answering questions, so...
Plus, what we're going to do with regards to the water line, the CMA president, I spoke to him at the last meeting, we're going to have a town hall with the residents of Mount Tabor with regards to lead copper rule, which, as you know, was imposed to us by the state. You have no copper up there, we got galvanized pipes, so they decided to add galvanized pipes, and the federal government said that we'd have to replace all lead pipes. So, if we went by the federal government guidelines, everything would be okay, but the state imposed galvanized as well, so... And we're going to have that meeting shortly, it seems going to be Monday or Wednesday night, I think that's what was given to me.
Okay, I don't think a date's been scheduled, I've been checking the...
Yeah, it hasn't been scheduled, I just got it a few days ago.
All right, great, because I'm perfectly happy to replace our galvanized line with copper, just needed...
Thank you, thank you for being here. Anyone else?
Hello, John Von Aiken. Just a quick comment, and I've got to get to my son's taekwondo, so I'll make this very quick. I'm a longtime supply chain personnel, I've worked in logistics and warehouse for more than 20 years now, so I have some very key experiences in warehouses, and the kind of expectations that the neighbors can have for them, which is, quite frankly, a lot of noise, a lot of light, and a lot of traffic. What I would say is any applicant that would seek to make use of this property, if it becomes a warehouse, accessible space, will need to adhere to noise pollution, light pollution, traffic volume, traffic safety, traffic flow, they'll need to make sure that they adhere to all of these performance standards, which are already on our ordinances. So, hopefully, that's sufficient to protect our neighbors, but even still, this is a business which, you know, brings me a lot of concern, so, you know, I want landowners to be able to do things that they feel are appropriate and necessary for their property, but we've got to make sure that the residences, which are already established there, don't lose the value of their property because of other developments which come into place, don't lose their quality of life, don't lose their businesses because of this, and that's really where my concern is on us. Now, just to, oh, thank you, just to offer one last comment, you know, zoning is the jurisdiction of the council, you guys get to decide what goes there, not the developers, not those of us on the planning board or elsewhere, you guys get to make this call. Now, they're suggesting that only a warehouse, or only multifamily homes are appropriate for this space. Well, really, you guys have the jurisdiction to put whatever you want there, and make it up to the landowner to decide whether or not they feel like they can make use of that space in that way. It's up to you guys. I suggest that maybe something out of the ordinary, a single-family residential development would be a more appropriate, 12 to 16 homes in that space, not different than what's behind East Lake School over in that area, could be a more effective use. Maybe the landowners don't get as much profit at this as they'd hoped for from the property, but it gives us the ability to have a consistent, or a land use which is consistent with the neighborhood. It makes it so that landowners get a clear exit from this property, which, you know, they clearly want, and it protects us from affordable housing in the future by locking up this land for some relatively low-volume use. So, I just consider that as an alternative, and leave it up to you, it's your call.
Here's what I will say with that, and it makes a lot of sense with John saying, very similar to Whole Foods, pretty much, there were single-family homes, but they came in, after it was denied, they came in, won 100% affordable housing application, which changes the whole set of rules, meaning that when you get 100% affordable housing application, it's a heavily beneficial use, and you can't deny it. So, that's the last thing we want over there, and 100% affordable housing application, because then, everything would be housing, and it's hard to, and I could be wrong on this, I don't think I am, because I went through it with Whole Foods, then try to deny that, it's almost impossible.
Yeah, John was, is a member of the planning board, and we discussed this at length last night. All of the issues that John mentioned, though, are site plan issues. At the time of site plan, that is when we would be concerned with noise pollution, light pollution, protecting the residential areas through buffers all around them, traffic issues, all of these are site plan issues to be discussed, and we will be doing that. All this particular ordinance tonight is just to approve a redevelopment concept.
Paul Sain, good evening, how are you? Paul, how are you, sir? Justin, chief, thanks for coming, good to see you again. My name is Dennis Letz, and just by way of introduction, just bear with me, can you hear me?
Little loud.
There you go, just bear with me, indulge me for a moment, I've been a resident of Parsippany for 23 years, I've been here. I served 25 years in the Secret Service, protected seven US presidents, 40 years plus of law enforcement in private sector security, including 12 years as the chief security officer for Avis, who's headquartered right here in Parsippany, the last six years as the National Football League security rep to the New York Giants. As the mayor knows, I worked at the World Trade Center, and after the first plane hit the World Trade Center, I ran into the building and initiated the evacuation of the west stairwell, stayed there for over an hour, was awarded the Medal of Valor for my actions that day, and as a result, I speak on a regular basis at the National 9/11 Museum and Memorial Well, I'll speak this Thursday. As far as my time in Parsippany, I spent 10 years of my time here as the chairman of the Traffic Advisory Committee, volunteered for 10 years, had a very good committee. Mr. Mayor, you know I spoke twice at TV shows that you had, my understanding was you were going to do this on a regular basis, I did two out of the three, I think you did three altogether?
I did more than that.
Okay, well, I did two out of the three, just wanted to remind you of that. A year after, I spoke at the Morris County commemoration for the 10th anniversary, you asked me to speak at the commemoration here in Parsippany, and I did that for you. You also asked me at one point to help you, you got in a little bit of trouble with EMS, remember that?
Yep.
Okay, so EMS was very upset, because the mayor suggested that we hire some full-time paramedics. I was on an airplane when you called me, you asked me if I can help with the evaluation, make recommendations, I took a lot of heat, I did it, and as a result of doing that, that recommendation that we made is still in effect today and working very well. So, done a lot for you, Mr. Mayor, as you know, and a lot for the town. But I'm coming here tonight, I don't want to be here, I'd rather be watching the Yankees play, but I'm coming to express my disappointment in you, and I'll tell you why. And first of all, I don't know, where is Karen? Karen is still here? I've never met Karen, I know who she is, because I read her comments and the comments of others on social media, that you claim you don't see. So, by saying that, you inferred that Mr. Musella is lying, but you may as well infer that about me, because I saw all these comments about crime. Now, there may not be a crime problem, as you suggest, but perception is reality, all right? When I saw that video of these two guys trying to break into a home, you tell me that's not a crime problem, seriously. I've been to three meetings since I've been in this town, the last time I came to a meeting, it was to confront you, and you remember that, in your office, you took me, because I wasn't happy with your response about a public safety issue again. So, I am not really pleased with the way you responded, seriously. Now, I came to you, I could speak all night about some of the issues that I've been disappointed with you, I'll limit it to one. I reached out to your Mayor's Action Center back in March about those newspapers that are being dropped in my driveway. Now, a few of you know that I'm building a home outside of New Jersey, I plan to be in both. Now, with the experience I've got, my house is like a fortress, but I cannot control the Star Ledger dropping these papers twice a week in my driveway. And by the way, it's not just me, it's my entire neighborhood. So, what did I do? I didn't go to Justin Musella, like you've so condescendingly referred to him, I went to the Mayor's Action Center, and guess where I got? Nowhere. I got nowhere, all right? I was told, maybe you should speak to the council about an ordinance. That wasn't really going to be the solution. So, I did reach out to Mr. Musella, I'd never met him before, but he was incredibly responsive and dedicated, and he helped me out. Now, multiple times, I came to you, by way of email, the last time, I made a suggestion that our township attorney write a letter. This whole process took three months, and all the whole of the time, these papers keep piling up. The letter was finally sent out, and I'm grateful for that. But two weeks after the letter went out... Pardon me? One minute. Two weeks after the letter went out, the papers continued. I reached out to Mr. Lavery, I reached out to you, two weeks ago, no response. So, that's really all I have to say, I'm deeply disappointed, because this is a security issue for me, and it's for everybody else, because when those papers pile up...
It's the Star Ledger?
Correct. I took care of the problem, because someone on social media responded, not the mayor, someone responded with a specific number, and my papers have stopped, but again, it shouldn't take three months with no response.
Did you call the Star Ledger, though?
I did, but I didn't have to do that, I tried multiple times prior, and got nowhere. Thankfully, someone on social media gave me a number to call, but again, my point today is no one from the mayor's office responded, and of all people, Mr. Mayor, of all the stuff I've done for you and for the town, to be ignored like that? I mean, did you tell Mr. Lavery not to call me back?
I'm going to respond to you, Dennis, in a moment, after you get done.
Please, go ahead.
First of all, you're not ignored, and...
I was.
You think you are, but you weren't, Mr. Letz, you really weren't ignored. I had you in my office with regards to many things, and we talked it over. When I told you the situation I was going through, you didn't even care about that, but that's beside the point.
Oh, I see.
That's something we could discuss privately ourselves, with regards to that.
You have a job, right?
When it comes to your papers on your private property...
Yeah.
We could respond, and we had our town, and I'll let you speak with regards to that, and I explained to you about First Amendment rights that the papers have, okay? We can't...
Your expression at the end, you know...
But we did what you asked us to do, okay? We did what you asked us to do.
Which was what?
So, and I'm going to let the township attorney respond.
Yeah, so I'm obviously not my flavor, and we're involved when I work with him, and I actually worked with him on this issue, and this is actually very specifically a First Amendment issue, the government can't get involved with controlling anything the press does.
No one's telling them not to write and print the paper, I'm telling them, don't put it on my property and let it pile up.
Well, with regard to any ordinance, the government cannot control the distribution of the press.
Respectfully disagreeing, and I think everyone else would as well.
But you're telling the town to tell the people to stop...
To stop littering on my property.
Yes.
That's all.
Yes.
I mean, you sent the letter, so obviously, you think there's some merit to it.
You're calling the town to tell the people to stop delivering this paper to...
Okay, well, with all these break-ins, you think it's a worthwhile endeavor to tell the Star Ledger not to do this?
We'd, I was not involved in this issue, but I would love to help on issues like this, but I think the first thing that I would have told you is to call them directly.
Which I did for months...
Yeah.
Until I came to you.
Mr. Letz, has the problem been solved?
Thanks to me, yes, not to anyone else, and that's my point. And by the way, last point, I promise, so, you spoke about social media, I looked at your social media account for six months, not a single reference to crime, nothing. So, if you want to...
If you go to my profile page, I have several pages, I don't post anything political on my profile page, and there's a reason for that.
Crime.
There's a reason for that.
Oh, well...
But if you go to the, I'm the mayor of the township, Dennis, and you need to understand that, we have a Facebook page with Park Police that puts the crimes on air, what to do, whatsoever, and then we will share it onto our Facebook page, okay?
I haven't seen it, six months, nothing on your Facebook page, nothing.
Because I don't use my profile, I like to have a personal life as well, I don't know if you understand that.
Number one priority is the safety of your people, right? Nothing else. Safety of your residents.
So, we should post on Facebook?
No, no, how about just let us know, there is not a crime problem, like you stated just today.
No, he didn't, we didn't say there wasn't a crime problem.
I heard someone say it.
But she was basically saying that, yes, there's crimes in Parsippany, but we're being targeted because we're the largest town in Morris County, that's what he's saying. And I mean, I heard in clear, I don't know if you did back there, but I'll stop the dialogue back and forth, Council President.
I'm just saying, communicate that to the people, so we know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Letz.
We do that, we do that.
Thank you.
What we just will do is read the Facebook page of the Park Police, which has 13,000 followers.
I think, just to add on to what Mr. Letz was saying, an improvement that the township can make is having better, thank you, is having better engagement with residents about key issues, public safety, when is my pothole going to get filled? Because some residents will tell me that they know when the farmer's market is, they know when the summer concert series is, but they don't know, what are we doing to stop crime? When is the pothole on my street going to get fixed? And the way we can improve and ultimately help our residents is by providing timely responses when people reach out about a concern, and I think that's what the gentleman was saying.
I like to respond to that with regards to, I know, you know, you think you're a Facebook guru, but here's the issue, we do post all that kind of stuff on our site with regards to the crimes and stuff like that, maybe we don't do it to your standard, but we do it, and I think the police department does a great job, the woman up there saying, you guys are doing a fantastic job, okay? Bottom line is this, with regards to Mr. Letz's comments, Mr. Letz has an angst against me, I don't go to Starbucks on Saturdays and sit down with you and Dennis Letz to decide what we're going to talk about, I don't do that, okay? But that's beside the point.
Maybe you should.
That's beside the point, Mr. Letz, because we had the conversation, we had the conversation at Starbucks, so we're sticking to saying you had a conversation with me, you did, when it came to your newspaper.
Oh, yeah, we talked about it.
We did, so you should have mentioned that, but you did not.
Please.
Right.
Please.
You did not.
Next, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Emily Peterson, 26th old Parsippany Road, I'm out of practice, so I wrote notes. For the record, the Mount Heber water line, I was serving on council when they came, so it was not last summer, it was at least two years ago, so it's been, speaking of when their thing is going to get addressed. Okay, so, it is a privilege to be back in your company, thank you for the time tonight, I am here in reference to ordinance 2309, adopting the Laninex West redevelopment plan. I have shared a map with you that I will reference during my time, as you know, as you may know, I am on the record during my time in office as being very pro-development, I broke rank and voted in favor of 1515, I thought at the time, and I believe now that bringing varied multi-use plans to areas designated in need of redevelopment serves the community at large, no one is arguing that point. I personally am looking forward to walking to the retail businesses, opening a park across the street, I am looking forward to the opportunities that will be served to the 525 new apartments that are being constructed, as well as the pre-existing adjacent neighbors. I am asking you in your roles to consider the same as it relates to Laninex West regarding the map, there's four areas indicated with green highlighter. First is the area in need of redevelopment in the middle. The second, immediately adjacent to the left, is the elementary school that shares the property line with this area in need of redevelopment. The third is the area, the 525 new apartments that are being built, and the fourth is a beautiful new crosswalk, state-of-the-art, that has been installed to connect all three things. The crosswalks are wide, they have lights on all four sides, and it is clear that the development of park intended for the immediate neighborhood to be walkable, and currently, besides Governor Livingston Park, there isn't much to see, and adding a warehouse is not going to help that situation. So, I'm asking you to keep this potential in mind as interested parties are considered. What serves the neighborhood that we've invested in to get 525 apartment buildings built? What vision can we sell those new constituents beyond our proximity to Route 80 and Route 287? I'm guessing that those 525 new tenants will be asking, and I recommend that you table this ordinance until we have very clear answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Poki Desai, I live at 98 Atlantic Drive. I'd like to commend the mayor and the council for repurposing existing area for the benefit of the residents of Parsippany. However, as president of LPPOA, a private organization, Lake Parsippany Property Owners Association, a community of 2,200 homes, and approximately 8,000 residents who surround Lake Parsippany. Parsippany is part of the Highlands Commission, and I'm sure you're all respecting this, LPPOA is also a part of Whipney Watershed, where the waters from Lake Parsippany drains into Whipney River. We are all volunteers, and we may not always get to read public notices, but the town does work full-time, and you guys should really reach out to me and make us aware of what's going on, because it impacts about 8,000 residents. Ignoring 8,000 residents to a potential environmental issue is problematic. The warehouse that many have spoken tonight, which might be operating 24/7 with trucks coming and going, running all the time, during loading and unloading, and potentially bringing increase of pollutants and oil spills, which will eventually end up in Lake Parsippany. This will increase the cost to keep the waters of Lake Parsippany clean, Lake Parsippany is jewel of our community, which is our main responsibility. When I say ours, I mean the town and the LPPOA. The retention basins were built in the mid-'80s, and have you considered for them to be readdressed during this proposal? I'm sure a long-term impact will be new pollutants going into the drain and... The retention basins were built in the mid-'80s, and have you considered for them to be readdressed during this proposal? I'm sure a long-term impact will be new pollutants going into the drain and eventually ending up in Lake Persippany. So I do appreciate that you consider how the waters will travel through the storm drains and necessary upgrades to the basins should be addressed. I'd be more than happy to, and available with any guidance, looking at any kind of plans that are drawn up to make sure the lake of water Persippany stays clean. Thank you.
So the only, Mr. Pocahontasai, the only question I have for you is, you know what can go there. What would you prefer to go there? Affordable housing unit, 100% affordable, or a warehouse?
If affordable housing goes there, then I would really like veterans to get first preference.
And I agree with you, but that's, it's not our choice.
I know.
And the fact is, and this is Supreme Court ruling, is that if they put a 100%, and I've been through this, Councilman DePiero's been through this, Councilman Karifi's been through this. If they come in with a 100% affordable housing unit, there's no stopping it. It's inherently beneficial use. So we're trying to get what's less of an impact in Persippany. And so my point is that I, I grew up in town. I've been here, you're probably people 23 years, I've been here 58 years in Persippany. I remember when there was a lot of farms here in Persippany as well. But we're not left with much of a choice. Because I will tell you this, we lived, we never thought that the developer was gonna come back with a 100% affordable housing unit, and they did with 666 units.
Yeah.
And trying to stop that was very difficult, but we did it. We won't be able to do it this time around, because the courts already ruled in Persippany, and at that time, there was no affordable housing rules in place until March 10th, 2015, when the courts came in and said, now we have the affordable housing rules will be in effect, and they're gonna be in effect again. And they're in effect now. So all I'm saying is, I don't wanna see nothing go there. I love Mrs. Peterson's house. I remember going through there. That was Persippany Road before you had Route 80. It was the most awesome drive. You had a tunnel of trees. It was neat. It was the, and, you know, I, listen, I mean, I shouldn't say this publicly, but if she ever sells the house, I would like the town to buy it.
Yeah. Well, I don't wanna stop it, but what I wanna say is, I'm, you know, I'm responsible to make sure the waters of Lake Persippany stays clean, and if there are pollutants going in there, and we have people swimming there in the summer, we have people who come with the fish from all over the place, you know, and kayaking and stuff. It's a gem that I wanna keep it going. So, you know, if, we should address how the water's gonna go in, where it's gonna go in, you know, and, you know.
And that would be addressed at the site, at the meetings. We heard Mr. Vark and Councilman DePiero said, that's all gonna be addressed, even if it's the housing, all that gets addressed.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
What did you say? I know, I know the mayor asked you which one you would prefer. Because this, again, this is just a vote on the redevelopment. This isn't saying that it's definitely gonna, this is...
Well, I know that, yes.
But, you know, and the mayor answered you that it can't be for veterans. So if it were one or the other, well, in your opinion, what do you think people in Lake Persippany would rather have?
Well, my opinion on that is, because many people in Lake Persippany hasn't talked, I do represent them, is whatever you bring in, eventually I wanna make sure, but even if it's housing, no problem. If it's a warehouse, fine. But I wanna make sure any pollutants that's gonna come into Lake Persippany does not have long-term impact.
Absolutely.
You know, because if that water, something really bad happens even five years from now, and I may not be president at that time, you know, I want someone from Lake Persippany, from the LPPOA board to come here and say that I voiced my concern. Let's consider it. We have the opportunity right now.
And that, and that would be handled by the planning, all of these things that you're talking about, the planning board would have to put these, you know, these requirements in place.
Constraints and what have you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Northover, and Mr. Mayor, council, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for signing the lease on the Mount Tabor Library. I'm gonna be very brief right now. I just want to clarify one point. I also signed it a few days ago, so I think we are finally done.
Oh, good, good.
Very much indeed.
Good evening. My name is Anita Polhemus, and I live at 30 Marmora Road, Lake Persippany. I am two blocks from Eastlake School. And I've done a lot of reading about warehouses in New Jersey. And the last article I read is there are 688 warehouses in New Jersey. We're not a very big state, but 688. My concern is that we are losing our community by overdeveloping. And as far as the veterans building, I believe Mountain Lakes is doing just that. It's incorporated a development for just veterans. And I think it's something that we can look at. I just think warehouses, every article I read, all the residents are saying, noise pollution, traffic, they can't open their windows all year long, it's not safe for your children. We are 100 feet from an elementary school. I think we are losing the integrity of our town, and I am adamantly against a warehouse. Thank you.
If I can again, if you don't mind.
Please, go ahead, Mayor.
Some towns own the property that they build these, and I like to see for veterans, my father was a World War II veteran as well, we don't own the property. We don't own the Lanedex. So in order for us to buy something like that, to even put a housing like that, I can't imagine what that property is worth, considering it can be used for affordable housing. As you know, water pool, when we tried to buy with open space, was worth $7.5 million at that time. But when the affordable housing, Supreme Court decided, that property went to $25 million. So, although I like to see some major restricted homes for senior citizens as well, you know, so when I do meet with developers, we do discuss those matters.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Patrick Burner. I live at 22 DeVille. You guys, the town has been repaving from Smith Road, from Masda Brook, all the way down to Smith Road. But as far as you got was East Halsey. You guys have markers that are out on the road. It was already paved, most of it, but as soon as you got to the old gas station, you guys just packed up all your equipment and moved. All the paving equipment is gone. An extra 100 feet for the road that has potholes and such, unless there's something else that I'm missing, because there's no gas markers, there's no water markers, there's no sewer markers being put out to correct the road. I mean, you're 100 feet connecting that should have been paved, and it, you could see a brand-new road and the old road, and it's garbage. It's been like that for years, and I'm not blaming anybody. It might have been in your contractor that didn't finish, because the white marker, the white paint markers are there. He normally went as far as East Halsey Road from Masda Brook, and he stopped. I was wondering if somebody could elaborate on that or move forward on that?
We can look into that. Usually, on some instances, they do them in phases, and I know that in 2020 and 2021, the capital budget was reduced significantly, so they probably couldn't do roads, because they didn't have the money to repair. At the time, they didn't have the bonding for it. But I could be wrong on that, but I'm only assuming that's what it could be. But we'll find out when that road would be paved. It's Halsey Road, right, near the library?
No, it's not Halsey, it's Smith Road from East...
Oh, East Halsey Road.
Yeah.
Oh, East Halsey, okay.
It's 80 feet. It's between two poles that they literally stopped, and the marker is there where they're supposed to finish.
Okay. We'll check into that.
Thank you.
Is that better? Yeah. I'm Pat Delafonte. I live in the Lake Persippany area. I hear the concept of affordable housing being brought about here, as if that's something that would be really awful in this town. I happen to know a lot of families where young people are starting out and they can't find a place to move into on their salary. I also see older people like me who are of limited income, and they need a place to live. So what is the problem with the idea that some parcel of road, of land, might have affordable housing on it? That sounds like, sort of like a boogeyman kind of thing.
Well, it's not that affordable housing is bad, it's the way it's structured. I'm an affordable housing administrator. Okay? The way they structure it is for every one affordable housing unit, you get to fill that, fill it for a normal rate. Well, that increases taxes, because it sends school-aged children to the schools. And out of that, so say you have 500 units, 20% is set aside for affordable housing. So if there's 500, 100 are affordable housing, 400 are at normal market rate. So that, that's what becomes the issue. So if you're just gonna build affordable housing, and you say you're gonna build 100 units, then it doesn't seem as bad, but the developer, it's called builder's remedy, they get to build, so they can make money on it, they get to build 400 at the market rate, and that's, that's why affordable housing is frowned upon. Because if you, if say, for instance, Persippany gets hit with 1,000 units, that's 5,000 new units in Persippany. And that increases the population, that increases infrastructure, more police, you know, can our fire department handle it? Those are the things that...
Mayor, refresh my memory. In the last go-around with the courts for affordable housing, we had to build 800 more affordable housing units, some number like that.
Correct.
Which meant that we had to build, we had to allow the developer to build 3,200 high-income units, so he can make money. Developers are not going to build apartments or anything else, unless they're gonna make money at it. So the courts have allowed them a four-to-one ratio. So we now have 4,000 additional units being built in Persippany, apartments being built in Persippany, to satisfy the court's mandate for 800 additional units. This is round three. We've already been through round one and round two. This is round three. In 2025, we will start round four of whatever the court mandates at that point in time. And the builders are not gonna build unless they're gonna make money. They wanna build their high-income units, and they're using the affordable housing units as a wedge to force us to work with them to do something.
And just not to put anybody on...
So affordable housing is not a dirty word. We support it. It's just the way the courts have imposed it on us for three rounds now, for 30 years. And we're, before we even started with this affordable housing mandate from the courts, Persippany already had 7,000 apartments, two six-story senior citizen complexes, high-density housing in Mount Tabor, in Rainbow Lakes, Lake Hiawatha, Lake Persippany. We had a trailer park even in Persippany. And yet the courts came by in the early, in the 1980s and said, we need to build 4,000 low-income units in Persippany. They looked at the entire state mandate and said, Persippany, you have open land, you have to build all of these. Well, their planners, the state planners, took every vacant piece of land in Persippany, hundred by a hundred between two houses, they added that to a total, they came up with a total vacant land piece, and that's where they came up with 4,000 units. Our engineers and lawyers had to fight that in the courts for 20 years to bring down the number to something reasonable that we could afford to do. And we've been dealing with this, so it's not that we're opposed to affordable housing. We're not. We support it. We've been inundated in Persippany. You know, we are the crossroads of northern New Jersey, so we are a desirable place to be. But the courts have to be reasonable, and they're not.
Yeah. I, I mean, again, all of you have a lot more experience than I have in this particular area. I can just tell you this much, though, I've lived in Lake Persippany a long time. No place anywhere in Lake Persippany is affordable now. You have to have a good income to buy into Lake Persippany, period. That's it. It used to be affordable, it's not. What, what would you consider affordable? And I'm really not trying to be facetious, but I was, happened to be driving by a motel and got stuck in traffic, and I looked and it said, monthly rate, $900. And I thought, for some people, that's all they can afford. I mean, what, what is affordable? I mean, you know, I'm hearing now about homeless people being dangerous and whatever. Maybe more people would have homes if we didn't say, you know, somebody has to build affordable housing, somewhere.
We have them in Persippany. We've had them for, since round one.
Yeah.
Affordable housing, we had them before then, even we didn't have a name for them, but we had them. Yeah, everything is expensive today. Everything has gone up, unfortunately.
Thank you, thank you for addressing the issue, my friend.
But the rate, the rate for affordable housing is different. It depends on if you're a single person, a couple, a couple with children, how many children. So it's a complicated chart that they have to define what affordable is.
I know that they're very small centers for seniors and disabled people, and those are key towards income. But they have only a few people in each of those complexes, very small number of people. And I, you know, I don't know what else there is for people with limited income. So, anyway, thank you.
Judy Hernandez, 5 Marine Road. Pat was asking about affordable housing, probably in response to the 100% affordable housing that you're talking about coming at the warehouse. You can't use affordable housing as a carrot and a stick. You want ratables, but you're gonna talk about affordable housing and say 100%. Developer's not gonna do 100%. 800 units, you're right, we got them down to 800 units, but in 2017, you were talking about building so much. The next round, wait till the next round comes. We're still doing the development from the last round. That's what's happening at Lanedex and so on. I agree with the people in Lake Persippany, it's already having a pollution problem. It costs them a ton of money, and this is just gonna add to that. And 100 feet from a school? Really? 100 feet from a school? That's it.
Okay, I'd like to respond, Griffin Godster. She pointed out 2017, because it was my last year as mayor. But from 2018 to 2021, 3,332 units were approved when you were on the, when you were on the planning board.
First thing, first and...
Okay, thank you. So, so 3,332 units were approved.
You would have dealt 2,300... Please, sit down.
When people get frustrated like that, no disrespect, it's because I told, I told the truth. I wasn't on the planning board from 2018. I, as the mayor, I went to the planning board meetings. Why? I'm the mayor of the town, you take responsibility. Former mayor did not go to any of the meetings. In fact, he designated Judy Hernandez as his representative. But from that point on, 2018, all the way to 2021, 3,332 units were approved. Because I understood the fact that you can't stop it. You can try, but you try to bring down the numbers as much as you can, but you can't stop it.
My name is Bob Venedzia. At the last meeting, we found out that the new Lake Hiawatha Library project cannot be approved, because the price tag has increased from $6 million two years ago to $9 million today, and that's a 50% increase. The reason given for the cost increase is inflation. But inflation alone can only explain about 20% of the estimated cost increase for the library. So what else has changed over the past two years that can count for the remaining 30%? So what else has changed over the past two years that can count for the remaining 30%? For me, the answer is obvious. The current $9 million cost estimate has been greatly affected by the terms and the conditions set forth in the Project Labor Agreement PLA ordinance, which did not exist when the original $6 million estimate was made. According to the only independent studies that are available, PLAs increase both the duration and the cost of projects by an average of about 30%. It is no coincidence that the unaccounted portion of the library's cost increase is almost exactly equal to the PLA overhead amount. There were a lot of good intentions associated with the passage of the PLA ordinance, but residents' concerns about the extra costs associated with the 30% PLA premium were never given the consideration that they deserved. Today, the residents concerned about the PLA have become a reality, and the PLA has claimed its first cost casualty, the Lake Hiawatha Library. There is no doubt that other casualties will follow unless the PLA ordinance is repealed. So I'm asking the council to do just that. Repeal the PLA ordinance before Persipony finds itself in the next Lake Hiawatha Library situation where it must choose between overpaying millions of dollars to complete a pot, a project, or scrapping the project altogether because of unaffordability. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, that is not factual whatsoever. Nowhere near factual. First of all, the $6 million, um, plan for the library was an estimate. Those, when I became the mayor in 2022 again, there was no PLA in effect. And the costs are already skyrocketing. Uh, this is before the rate of inflation went up to what it did go up to. Um, first, you have other factors involved with costs. One is bond rating. The bond rating has increased from towns borrowing at half percent to 6%. Uh, the, the, the cost has nothing to do with the PLA because even with a PLA or not a PLA, it has to go out to bid. And the bidding process is basically done with what? The criteria of supply and demand, material, and what the contractor, non-union or union thinks, thinks it would cost.
Mayor, does the township put out the bid or does the library board put out the bid?
Well, I'm just, I'm just going by it because he's using, uh-
Does the township put out the bid or does the library put out the bid?
I, I, I don't know who goes out. I think, I, I think it would be the township. I could be wrong, though.
I disagree. I think it's the school board.
But either way, they're a public entity.
The library board.
Right. They're a public entity and they have to follow the, the procurement process, just like a township has to follow the procurement process. They have to meet all the criteria, libraries have to meet all criteria, townships, and it's pretty much the same criteria with regards to the amount of money. So the amount I'm gonna, what I'm gonna say next is, so if it's a library or a township, and I, you can't quote me on this, but if it's anything over a million dollars, has to go to prevailing wages. Okay, that's a state law. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I don't-
Prevailing wages.
Yeah, so has, has to go to prevailing wages. And it has nothing to do with a union, a non-union, has to do with the fact you got to pay prevailing wages. That's exactly what Councilman Carifi was saying. They weren't paying the wages over in, um, Lanedex, they were paying the members under the table, so the Department of Labor shut them down. We still got to pay prevailing wages, union or non-union.
I'll ask the attorney.
Yep.
The township adopted a PLA, over $5 million, it kicks in. The library board is autonomous, independent of the township. Do they fall under the township's PLA?
I'd have to look at the ordinance, but I believe that it is township ordinance that governs-
So if they put out a bid, they have to follow our ordinance?
It's a public entity in the township, uh, so I believe that the sewer utility, uh, they're all governed by the ordinance.
And I believe the library is a township, however.
The sewer, the water, the no, and the township, yes, um, but, but those are part of the township.
Specifically, but if it's a, if it's a public entity, uh, it should be governed by the ordinance.
And, and, you know, just to the gentleman's, uh, point, um, you know, this is why I thought it was better for us to assess the impact on potential projects before we pass something and then started trying to figure out what the new reality would be for us. So, uh, that would definitely be an important question I'd also like answered, but I think during the PLA episode, I also raised the same concern.
Council President, it's a township, it's a township building.
The question was, excuse me, the question was, the gentleman said it increased because of the PLA. That is not factual, that is not true. It increased before the PLA was even there. Like, how do I know? I was the mayor. In January of 2022, there was no PLA. And it, the cost skyrocketed. Um, and, you know, that's, that's what, that's the whole process. Even without a PLA or with a PLA, it was going, it was going to skyrocket because of supply and demand. You can't get workers, you can't get, you can't get skilled workers, you can't get, you know, you, you, at that time, it was, the freight and inflation was higher than eight, than eight percent. Um, and, and that's one of the reasons why. And the bond rating went up.
Pre-pandemic was far more reasonable than post-pandemic costs for everything.
Anyone else like to speak?
So I was a little confused as to whether we talked about the ordinance later or now.
Your name, please.
Nancy Brighton. At Risk, I'm the 15 Maplewood Drive Historic Preservation Advisory Committee Chair. So I'm gonna, I have an ask with regards to the ordinance. The Livingston Benedict House, AKA the Peterson House, is a National Register-listed property. That means it is not only significant for the state of New Jersey, but it is significant for the nation. It represents part of our revolutionary past, which is going to come up on the big 250th celebration starting in 2026. So it's been recognized, everybody knows it. I understand development, whatever, there's a plan that's getting referenced. That plan does not really address the presence of the Livingston Benedict House, um, even though it's on the master plan, it is, it's in there. Um, with the redevelopment when we did for, um, with Whole Foods and everything, you know, we had to go, getting anything considered with regards to being a historic property, even if it's in the master plan, we have to fight to get recognition and consideration, both in front of the planning board and then when it goes to zoning. So given that we are at the ordinance stage, can the ordinance have in it, go for the redevelopment, but that redevelopment must consider and recognize the historic significance of the Livingston Benedict House and consider minimizing impacts to that property, which would also include the park, the Governor Livingston Park, that whole sort of little island that's over there? That's the ask. Thank you.
If I can just make a comment on that. This is strictly a redevelopment approval tonight. Um, but I, I do sit on the planning board and I, I will, uh, when we review any site plan, I will certainly keep that in mind. Thank you.
Nicholas Armack, is there going to be a separate hearing on the Lanedex after all these comments?
Yes.
There's going to be another public session, correct?
Sure.
Correct. All right. I'll save it for then. Um, I'm glad this North Beverwick, um, road thing is not going to take place, uh, what was the proper thing for here? I forgot. Uh, the streetscape. And this is why, and I said the same thing to Mayor Soriano, and I would say the same thing to any mayor of this town. In a neighborhood like that, in where you have businesses that don't even clean up in front of their own franchises, those storm drains are always, uh, full of plastics, there's, it's, it's, uh, it's substandard as, as any concept of clean community. And even if you make a concern, they might address that one thing, and then the same thing happens again. And no one, we have the health department, the housing department, police department, no one sees any of that. It's just, you know, it can, it, they don't deserve our taxpayers' money, and they have enough already. Now, it needs minor repairs, you see some of these curbs, things like that, but a new streetscape? It doesn't, there's nothing wrong with that, uh, environment up there, except they're, they think that this town and employees of this town are slaves to their business. And I don't know why the Economic Development Committee or the Environmental Committee can't get the standards and practices up there toward more of a clean, a clean community. Go at the end of those franchises, see, one garbage can, there's no source separation. Even though they may have their own vendor, it all goes to the same landfill, so it's costing everybody in the end. So I'm, I, I, I'm glad that that's not happening. It's same, you have the employees up there watering the flowers, and there's a plastic bottle right in the street, the guy won't pick it up. So there's something, there's a this big disconnect. So, uh, and I understand the garbage men, uh, are up for a contract. Now, let me tell you something, you brag that this town has a, a two-day-a-week pickup. Well, you know what that does? It makes them work harder and it discourages people from being, uh, from proper source separation. It makes it more convenient for them just to throw everything away two days a week, and the garbage men are stuck with it. So these guys, like police officers, they deserve the best too. They deserve the best too. And I'll tell you right now, I love my garbage man, and I see what they do and what, and what they put up with. And two days a week plus recycling? Give those guys all you can give them, because they deserve it, just like a police officer does. All right?
Thank you. Thank you for coming up.
Hello.
Renee DiMaggio Richardson, um, here representing myself, my dad, and partway funeral home. And, uh, I am here because I am... I'm emotional about this, because I care for my family, but I care for all my families. And you don't have to be blood to be a family member. And you are all my family members, for one way, one way shape or another. And what we want to know is, is, and I, I know we're not voting on this, but is this the only two options that we have for this property? The reason why we ask is because, one of the reasons we ask, is as we care for our families, and as we have families come in and out of our establishment, there are times that we have military honors outside of our funeral home. And it is very important for us to have that. Not just that, but there are also times that we are, every morning, you know, that we have a funeral, walking out of our funeral home. And there could be taps being cleaned. Am I going to have beep, beep, beep next to these families, listening to this? Am I going to have these noises and these sounds, these trucks, being, interrupting these moments of people watching their loved ones walk out of the funeral home? This is very, very, very concerning to us. We love our town, we love everything about our town, but yes, we have a school right there. We have my nieces that go there. Pollution, all of that. It's also, um, our understanding that this building is filled with mold. Will it be remediated before it's torn down? Um, depending on which way the wind blows. Will I have mold spores coming at us at the funeral home? We live there. My 14-year-old, my 11-year-old, my four-year-old, they play outside. Will this be an issue? I've been there. I'm sick. I get it. We can't control some things. But if there is any other options for this property, is there? That's, that's a question that we have. And, and I don't know. I'm not political, I'm not involved, I, I don't know what the answer to that is, but that is a question that we ask.
Well, Renee.
I know.
I know.
I know.
There are, there's three options, actually.
Okay.
And the one option is a commercial building, which it is now. And that market is, you know, due to COVID, as you know, it's changed significantly. You can't get anybody to come back to the offices anymore. So it's going to be dilapidated for a long time. Um, the other option, like I said, is a warehouse, and the third one is the, um, housing. Um, it's not, and it's, the town can't afford to buy it.
Right.
Because of the, the price tag, because once you start buying properties up like that, other developers will ask us to do the same.
Okay.
And then, um, I don't know any other option.
Okay.
Other than hopefully if someone had a lot of money and wanted to buy it and make, you know, keep it open space.
We're playing the lottery, I promise.
I know. So that's the only thing I can think. I'm only being honest.
No, I know. Okay.
You've known me for, God, who knows how long.
My whole life.
And you know what? If I'm not going to be honest with you, and sometimes people get upset when you're honest, and then, and I'm okay with that. I'm okay, because at least I'm not even telling you the truth one way or the other. But the, this, the first option I said, that just isn't going to happen. When we got the marketing report saying you're not going to see recovery to 2040, that's, that's a long time away. And, and either we have to retrofit these buildings, or your taxes are going to skyrocket. And, you know, and the burden is going to be on the residential portion, not the commercial portion. Although it's a warehouse, it's still considered industrial and commercial.
Yeah.
And it brings nothing but a ratable in, um, or, you know, or if, if it, if it doesn't pass at the planning board, um, you know, my opinion, there will be housing, because we've been through this already, so. And, um, because, you know, when you own property, you want to make a profit on it.
Yeah. Okay. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See one else? See no one else come forward?
Make a motion to close?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Carifi. Roll call, Mr. Carifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Musella?
Please.
Can you say that again?
Okay. So, uh, we had a motion by Mr. Musella, a second by Mr. Carifi.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Would you please repeat?
Can we continue? All right. Uh, we had a motion by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Carifi. Roll call, Mr. Carifi? Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is closed.
Ordinance for a second reading, ordinance 2023 colon 09. An ordinance of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills adopting a 2030 Lanedex Plaza West redevelopment plan. The notice for ordinance 2023 colon 09 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills on June 6th, 2023, and introduced at the June 27th, 2023 regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2023 colon 09, be heard in their second and final reading by title only, by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Carifi.
Uh, is now where we make comments?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Uh, for this portion, I'll vote yes. Okay, uh, Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Okay, um...
The motion passes?
Motion passes, we're waiting for the public.
Thank you. Motion to open the public hearing by ordinance, for ordinance 2023 colon 09, by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Uh, Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public, you have five minutes to speak on this ordinance only.
Julia Peterson, 25, Old Persipony Road. I really just want to know, I mean, I want this really clarified, because I, our queue went through the same process. Area needed redevelopment, declared, goes to the planning board, planning board says something, it comes back to you, then you send it back to the planning board. And then, when there was questions about stuff, there was no way that they could enforce certain questions that the public had. And I'm just, I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. The other thing I'm concerned about is when we were noticed, property owners within 200 feet were all noticed about this. At the bottom, it says, um, there will be no further notice. So that means that when it goes to the planning board, there won't be notice, right? When it comes back to another hearing here, there will be no notice. Is that true?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
But that's what the, here's the, here's the notice to property owners.
May I ask?
The planning board would require that a notice be sent out.
This is the notice that's sent, I don't believe there are additional notices that will be sent.
No further notices will be sent.
What about when they-
What is a planning board hearing?
When they have a planning board hearing, they have to be noticed.
I, I mean, what this says is there won't be any.
The, the hearing will be advertised, but I, I do believe that the notice is only sent out at this time and no additional notices are sent. The planning board hearing, the hearing will be advertised, but there will, I would not, and, and I will double-check that for you, Ms. Peterson.
Okay. Because then the people that didn't make it here tonight, who live within 200 feet of this development, are essentially being deprived of their voice in this, which is, I'm sure, fine for everybody.
Council President, I think it's separate hearings.
The other thing I'm, I'm really concerned about, the fact, I don't know how many of you read Plan A all the way through, 90 pages.
I did not.
Who's, who's read this? Actually, the, the planning board voted on it and none of them had a copy either. I was the only person- I was the only person in the room that had a copy. Oh, I'm...
I read it.
Okay. Great. And it is what you're passing with this ordinance. And I understand why you have to do it. What you're passing with this is a very powerful statement about purpose in this town. And as long as you're comfortable with that, that's great. Because you're in charge of the town. And we only live here. But that's what I feel about it.
Could you please... Mr. Baldwin, could you please answer?
Yeah. So I just want to... As the first I saw this notice. So this notice is for the ordinance tonight to approve the uses that go back to the planning board. There will still need to be applications for site plan approval, all of that, for the actual development before the planning board, which should, will be noticed.
Yeah. 200 foot.
Yes, for the site plan.
Which is what I said.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. That's what I said.
Okay. Excuse me. Mr. Baldwin, would they... The people that live within the 200 feet, they will be renoticed? That there will be another planning board meeting? Or do they have to look at some newspaper article to know that there is going to be another planning board meeting?
So all planning board meetings will be noticed as normal?
Yes.
That will be public notice according to law. As for any site plan approval, as that gets put before the planning board, that will be noticed per law. And I believe that part of the site plan approval requires it to be put for all property owners 200 feet.
But there will never be another notice for council?
So this is for the ordinance. As ordinances are adopted, I don't know if there's any more anticipated. But this ordinance is permitting this to go back to the planning board.
Okay. Thank you.
Nicholas Hanyek. I would think it's totally inappropriate even for a developer to consider such a site for a warehouse with all the impacts with the beep, 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 and the pollution, and the coffee cups all over the place. Within how much distance from a school? But Mayor Barberio, in all due respects, when you presented this, it seemed like the $100,000 as a ratable was the supreme consideration, not the community, not the resident taxpayer, or the quality of life. So minus $100,000 from whatever we have now, and we maintain our quality of life. And we can't see public housing is a responsibility. It's not a fear... Something to be feared. And that's what developers depend on so they can, you know, wedge their way in and use their muscle. But we're zoned for affordable housing. We're set tight. They can't... They can't do anything to us. We can say, "And don't we have enough affordable housing already?" Right? And if they don't fill all these spaces, how are you going to have round three, round four? They're going to have to start filling these spaces and lowering the rents. And these corporate real estate barons that own all of this, they got plenty of money. It's the greed. They want what the market will bear. But in the end, you just can't build and not fill the space. So that's part of the fear tactic, too. All the rounds that are going to come. And we're going to have to be, you know, subjected. If we played the cards right from day one and saw housing as a responsibility and that vacant land inventory... That vacant land inventory could have been used in our favor to say that these places now, being we're going to have affordable housing, is going to be open space for the town. And to protect our water supply. And part of the reason we're in the predicament we're in now is the ratable chase. And we're overdeveloped. And what did Precipiny expect? Right? We have all these vacant things. So, I mean, you know... But this is not the right place. And if it came down to affordable housing, yes, people need places to live. That would be the better choice. I think Governor... The ghost of Governor Livingston and all the people, if they look out the window there, they'd rather see an apartment building than a warehouse. So it's just totally inappropriate. And don't think about the $100,000.
No, no.
Think about...
First and foremost, I know you're talking about...
Are you finished, Mr. Baldwin?
Yeah, I'll let you finish, Nick. You're talking about $100,000. We're talking about a positive ratable. There's difference in ratables. You have ratables of housing, which isn't a positive ratable. Okay? And you have a positive ratable in a commercial property and a warehouse. Why? It's 100% of that money is not going to the school system. I mean, it goes to the school system, but not sending any school-aged children. That's where the factor comes in. I will tell you this. I prefer, if I had to... If I lived over there, and I don't, I wouldn't want affordable housing. I wouldn't want a five-story building because it's not just affordable housing, and I stated that. But that's not up to me. And I said it to a gentleman before. You got to choose which one you want. And that's where it comes down to. Because something's going to be built there. It's that simple. I don't see it any way. I mean, every developer that has come to me when I was mayor the first 10 years, they're going to build what they think... And you're right, it comes down to money. Where they can make the most profit. I mean, let's face it. That's how it works. That's exactly what they're going to do. And I don't know if more profit is to build affordable housing and housing. Because it's not just affordable housing, it's housing as well. And then you're going to be in a situation where you said you could take these properties off, where they can't build any more housing. Well, how do you do that? By retrofitting it to be other than housing. Okay, that's how you do it. You say you make a warehouse here, you make another office building here. Well, those places are now off the affordable housing market. And not that affordable housing is bad, because we heard some individuals... It's the type of affordable housing. There's several types of affordable housing. Of course, a registered is one of the best types. A senior home is one of the best types. Same thing. It doesn't bring school-aged children in. But we need to be honest with each other here. Because in all reality, if we're going to take that, what you just said, and just build housing, you're going to have to build another school. Because you're going to have to build another elementary school. Okay? Because when you take Laninex, that was just approved in 2020. Laninex alone, if you do the Rutgers studies... I don't know how the Rutgers studies work. They're talking about 1,000 new school-aged children coming into the township. Okay? Eastlake doesn't even handle that many. So you're going to need another school if you continue to build housing. Okay? I can't imagine what another elementary school has run across, and it's probably bearing $56 million. But you're going to have to build it if we continue to not retrofit these properties not to be housing.
No. Sorry. Sorry, Nick. You've already had your five minutes. Thank you. You came up. Anyway.
I see no one else.
Close it. Let's go, Mike.
Bob Benetti again. I wasn't prepared for this, but in listening to everybody talking, if you have two options... And I'm hearing most of the people... I have not heard one person say... And I don't live in the neighborhood. I'm not directly affected by this. I haven't heard one person say that they wanted warehousing. So I think that you should just leave it up to them. You know?
That would be... We can't do that. That's something that we can't do. That's going back to the planning board. And hopefully, the residents that live there will be coming to the planning board, expressing their desires. And they just will have to see what happens.
If there's two options, I just think that you should do the option that, you know, the people want. That's all.
See no one come forward for a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title and second reading, and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Mr. Karifi, who had asked if this was the time where we can make public comment or public discussion. So at this time, I will go ahead and entertain the council for some public discussion or public comment on the matter prior to roll call.
I know, you know, like the mayor had stated, that this area is definitely in need of redevelopment. And I know that's what this vote is on tonight. It is on just for the redevelopment. I have major concerns about that being potentially a warehouse for a lot of different reasons. One, the historical value of the neighboring property. The school, Eastlake School, I went to school there. I couldn't imagine listening and hearing those noises all day, being a student there at that school. It's 100 feet away. Parcory Funeral Home. I've attended many, many funerals there. And Renee talked about some of the ceremonial presentations and stuff that are done at these funeral homes. And I couldn't imagine... I've partaken in some of those throughout my law enforcement career. And I couldn't imagine being outside or being a... Having a... My own family funeral at the funeral home and hearing that right next door. Or whatever else, not just the noise, but other factors that are there. And in the residents that live in that area. You know, there's been a lot of different things. Like, Bob, you brought up, you know, what most people have said. Tonight is just a vote on the redevelopment. And I would urge, if it were to go the route of a warehouse... And this is not a vote saying that I am... Because I am... I have major concerns about that being a warehouse. But it is just a vote on the redevelopment. But I would urge that the planning board, and I'm sure they will... I know they will, because I know Mr. DePiero will... Will listen and take into account each and every one of those factors. The residents, the school people, the funeral home, Mrs. Peterson. And if it were to go that way, do everything possible, everything possible, to not affect any of those, any of those areas. Again, I'm going to vote yes, and it's just for the redevelopment. I don't want people to say that I'm voting for a warehouse, because I am not. I'm just voting. It is definitely in need of redevelopment. But if that were to be approved for a warehouse, I would just hope that it would take into consideration every factor for all of those things and make sure that it does not affect in any way, shape, or form, any of those, any of those things. So...
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
If no one else will speak, I will mention. The planning board, when it was discussing this area in need of redevelopment, we went way outside the bounds of that topic. Julia Peterson was there, the mayor was there. Correct me if I misspeak, mayor. But a lot of concern was introduced by members of the planning board. Okay, first of all, the trucks will dock on the Precipiny roadside, not the Eastlake School side. There will be no trucks going behind the building. It'll be strictly on the Precipiny roadside. So the beeping sound should not get back there. We talked about buffering, buffering in all directions. From Eastlake School, from the funeral home, from the historic house, buffering in all directions were included. Timing, you know, when can they operate, when can they not operate? All these things were brought up at the planning board, which was not the proper time to discuss them. But all of the planning board members expressed concern about all different aspects of this. So we all have the same kind of concerns on the planning board, and they will all come up, I'm sure, ad nauseam, until we're satisfied that we've done everything we can, if indeed it does become a warehouse, that we've protected the area as much as we possibly can. Did I say anything out of place?
I didn't want to take you...
Thank you. This is accurate.
Steal your thunder.
No. I was just going to ducktail off what Mr. Karifi said. I... Now, when it says redevelopment, I'm hoping that it can really be looked into as far as what it's going to be redeveloped into. I don't like the idea of the beeping horns, the school right there. But I also understand that, you know, we have to do something there because it needs to be redeveloped. So I just think it needs to be looked at real strongly, as Mr. DePiero also said, with the buffers, if it's going to go that route. But I think a lot more consideration has to go into this, and it really needs to be looked at much more deeply. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. I listened to a lot of you who came tonight to speak. And it's extremely important that all of you express your concerns. I heard one comment about, you know, I think it's an unfair characterization of not wanting to serve the community if you feel that a developer has told us that his most valued use is a warehouse. And as you know, right now, we have 12 apartment complexes being built. And on that road, there's 600 units currently under construction. And we also have to balance your concerns and the planning boards, the proper venue where they can address the impacts of the development, which really has been the overlapping amount of objections that have been raised about this development, from traffic to noise and the like. But we have to be mindful that, you know, we have 25 million square feet of office, of which 20% is vacant. And the mayor had said correctly that it is not going to be filled anytime soon. So we have to make decisions that are in the best interest of the taxpayers. We have a vacant office property right now that is a net loss for the community. It's an attractive nuisance. It's filled with mold. My preference is to have a state-of-the-art, modern warehouse that's going to have cameras, that's going to be well-lit. I think that's a superior partner to a vacant office building. Let me finish, please. And I also think that, based off of the estimates that I've seen, there will be an additional $100,000 coming into the municipality, which in these financial times that we have, where we're severely constrained, could be an additional two to three police officers that we desperately need. So it's, you know, for all of those reasons, where we need to create conditions that our small business owners who own a bulk of these vacant office properties, to allow them to have the conditions to reposition these assets. And it's also important that they do it within the confines of the law. They do it within the confines of your objections, which is where that will take place at the next stage at the planning board. So it's for those reasons that I also will vote yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm just going to be reiterating exactly what Mr. DePiero, Mr. Karifi, and Mr. Neglia said, also Mr. Musella. Please go to the next planning board meeting. Ms. Peterson, I always enjoy you coming up before us. You are a wealth of knowledge. And I think every one of our residents appreciate everything that you do for this township.
By the way, light pollution was also mentioned by planning board members. Light pollution, sound pollution, traffic. This was... This was, this, these are all concerns of the planning boards, and, and that was, last night's meeting was not the time when they would, those concerns would be answered. It'll be when there is a site plan, and we have something before us, to evaluate and to change or to make mandates on.
Okay, no more discussion, so if there's no more discussion, I'll go ahead and go into the roll call, we had a motion by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Neglia. We had discussion, at this point, I will take roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Consent agenda be resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are routine and non-controversial by the township council, will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council members are requested, in which case the item will be removed, and the consent agenda considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda by myself. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani? Ms. Grignani, Mr. Grigna, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Motion passes. Payroll?
Uh, payroll, approval of payroll and bills list, CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization for payment. Number one, authorized payment of the July 21st, 2023 regular miscellaneous payroll, estimated at 1.65 million. Number two, payment of bills from voucher list of July 15th, 2023, through July 17th, 2023, is $1,073,274. Motion to approve the authorization for payment above made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn the meeting by myself, second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
We're adjourned, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.